Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce the council to the board. At this time, please stand for the place of allegiance. About that presentation, long in the winter, expectation we will take our moment of silence to honor Eric McQuire as a retired policeman who passed away last week. So, let's do the place of allegiance.
Let's lead us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's bow and give some prayer, please. Our gracious and kind, definitely Father, we want to thank you for today. We are humbled in your presence, Lord, and we ask that you will guide this council tonight. Lord, we ask that you will be with them and give them the courage and the wisdom to make the decisions that are not only in the best interest of the town, Lord, but the county and the state, and also the federal government, Lord. And we also realize that this will be the last opportunity that we have to meet before we have a new leader selected. Lord, we ask that you'll, a week from today, that you will be with everybody in the United States, Lord. Give people clarity, give people direction. Lord, we ask that your will will be done. Lord, we ask that, and all of this in your son's name, I mean.
Amen. Like they do, that plus everyone's put their election being next week. Basically, we move our council meeting to tonight. And just to remind everyone that the town election is also concurrent with the national elections. And we have three council seats up, the mayor's plus the mayor's. And our elections are non-partisan, non-party affiliated, so please remind everybody that you vote personally and not for the party in air case. At this time, we have a special presentation. Glad to welcome Eric, 38th senate, senate for Ben Shaken.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, here as a council. Thank you very much. It's great to be here at the town Tassle, and it's great to be here to present you a sermon. You know, 150 years is a long time ago. Most of us don't remember that far back. And the town Tassle was so beautiful. I get the opportunity to come here on a regular basis to the courts and to visit with a lot of people from Tassle and to follow my profession. And I always enjoyed it. I've always treated, long before I got into politics, I was treated very nicely by the people of Tassle County. And you've got a great town here, a really, really great town. And done a lot, really a lot with the people here in the last few years, particularly with your historic designation and the way that you were following it and all that, and all of the festivals and all of the street parties and things that you've got going on here. It's very nice to see that in southwest Virginia and to see southwest Virginia being revitalized by a council who understands that we've got to take care of ourselves here in southwest Virginia. Largely, it's up to us to make southwest Virginia the kind of place that we, of course, want other people to come and visit and to be part of. I'm very happy to be a part, along with Delmore Field, part of putting this committee resolution before the general assembly and the senate. And I'd like to present this resolution to you, and I'll read it to you if you would like to.
Okay.
All right, this is the Senatorial Resolution Number 135, Committee of the Town Tassle. Patrons were Chaffin. And it was agreed to by the senate February 4th, 2016, agreed to by the House of Democrats February 12th, 2016. Whereas the installation of the area known as Tassle dates to the early 1700s, when groups of hunters from eastern Virginia first explored the area that is now called southwest Virginia. And whereas in 1773, William Perry and Sammy Ferguson settled the area that would become the town Tassle. And whereas on land provided by William Perry, the General Assembly in 1800 established the seat of a new Virginia county, Tassle County. And whereas the county's seat was named in honor of Thomas Jefferson, who was sworn in as the country's third president that year and had received every vote from the citizens in the area that would become known as Jeffersonville. And whereas the General Assembly incorporated the town Jeffersonville in 1866. And whereas in February 29, 1892, the town Jeffersonville was renamed the town Tassle by the General Assembly because it was commonly referred to as Tassle Courthouse, causing considerable confusion. And whereas Tassle began to grow as a center of commerce in 1992, became the tallest town in America with a streetcar when the first trolleys pulled by a horse or a wheel were used. In 1904, the town Tassle upgraded to electric trolley cars. And whereas the town Tassle and its neighbor, the town North Tassle, merged on January 1, 1963. And whereas today, the town Tassle is home to more than 6,000 residents. And whereas Tassle is located at the headwaters of the Clinch River, the springs of Tassle eventually became part of the Tennessee and Ohio rivers and ultimately flowed into the Mississippi River. And whereas Tassle is an here adjacent and vibrant community rich in history and natural beauty. Now therefore, be resolved by the senate, the House of Democrats, concurrent, that the General Assembly hereby commend the town Tassle on the occasion of its 150th anniversary. And be resolved further that the clerk of the senate prepare a copy of this resolution for presentation to the mayor of Tassle as an expression of the General Assembly's congratulations and admiration for the vibrant and growing community of Tassle in southwest Virginia.
Actually, I have two here, one for Christmas, one for... And this is from the road rest we had serving.
I'm very kind. I'm very kind. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
We also look at...
Sorry, I couldn't leave here. Where take your cell phone? Where do you want? This is church, anyway. I know what I'm doing on the senate floor. I'm sorry. We're missing her. I can just leave this with your clergy.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thanks for letting me in. And I can go on important issues and follow you. I can just leave this with your clergy.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the presentation by the Tassle County Fair. We have Marcus Gilbert, Allen, Jeff, uh...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, the town council, and the boys of the town, the manager of the town. Appreciate you allowing us to come up here and want to thank you for having us tonight. This is Ms. Vava Asbert. What we're here for tonight is to express our deep gratitude and appreciation to the town of Tassle for all the things that you've done to help us at the county fair. Without you, I don't know that we even had a fair this year. The employees, when I asked for help, we'd ask, and Donnie and some of the others here, they would help us, and they cheerfully helped us, and they were very efficient in their work, so we got a reply from the senate to you. But what I'd like to say is if the Tassle County Fair can ever do anything to receive better kindness, please call on us. You've got a fine group of people here, proud of this town, and proud of the employees of this town. And you're just a great credit to the community, so just know that we appreciate you and hope to see you in 2017.
Okay. Thank you. We'll have Manager Day, Chief Cooper, and we should probably come up when we see this one.
And I didn't mean, I didn't mean to admit Chief Cooper. His guys, his guys kept the peace down there. We had less trouble at this fair than we've ever had in the past, and those guys did a great job. Thank you, chief. I appreciate it, sir.
Well, we're referring to me. That's pretty sad.
Fair, you should get a hug right there.
Thank you. We'd like to congratulate y'all for jobs open up for the county fair. I know it's a difficult job, and so it's a great night for our community, and thanks to you for...
We appreciate the support you do about us here in the town.
Appreciate that.
I think this is my office that looked like I did a long while.
Also, at this time, we'd like to recognize publicly thanking Don Dunfer for his kind gift for dominating the theater to the town. We are now ownership of that theater, and we will be proceeding with fixing that up. Well, we definitely will need some state funds to help us, anyway.
I'm listening.
Okay, just time for the team, why don't you need to speak?
Yeah.
When we move on, approval of the minutes, approval of the work session and council meeting, October 11th, October 24th, the hair motion to approve those minutes.
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
They have a second.
I'll second.
Any additions or corrections? Here and now, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried next to him, the approval of the financial statements as presented. Hair motion to approve those.
So, move. Second.
Any additions or questions? Aye, here and now, call for a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried next on the agenda is the town manager's day on ongoing projects. And we've got out of projects, aren't we?
Oh, no. Looked a long way from being out of a local project, that's for sure. Just to let council know, this week, we applied for seven bridges of DOD in town. We've actually got seven that are on a list for necessary work that we have to accomplish. The state's got a new program out there, and soon to say, we really appreciate good programs. DOD in the last couple of years has really stepped up in locality, primary extension's been a long one for us, revenue sharing's been wonderful. HV2, if you can give us any help there on that, we appreciate it. HV2 project is the one in front of Chris Brown's office, that's the intersection upgrade. We just applied for seven bridges in town. Some of those bridges have cost tags on that are in excess of $2 million, some of them as low as $100,000, about what the work to be done on them. So, we're really proceeding forward with a lot of grants, I guess, and looking forward to getting results on those. Not a whole lot of changes. Route 61 is continuing forward, not a whole lot of change on that project. We're working with the PSA right now on, obviously, the Pocahontas PSA, Tassle water project. If you'll recall, the North Tassle tank is taken offline years ago to, you know, to help address fire flow. So far, the town's price tag on what could have been well over $1.5 million project has been reduced to about $300,000, and we're still working on that. So, ongoing projects is, we're continuing, just like we said, looking forward to various projects we have on the town. Any questions? Got it?
Okay. We'll move on to the committee force, planning commission, council board.
Planning commission, if not this month, if we will meet next Monday night.
Okay. Council, volume on the train station.
Train station committee met about an hour and a half ago, and we had a good meeting. We talked about some of the things we're working for, raise additional funds for the train station, including the bricks. The bricks will be engraved with names of donors or those who would like to place in memory of individuals. Our goal is to do at least 100 bricks in a special section down there at the train station. Right now, we have sold 21, so we would like to see that encouraged, and we anticipate setting a termination date on getting those bricks pretty soon. So, if you're interested in getting one of those, please go to the train station website, the county website, Historical Society website, and several other Facebook pages that have the information on those bricks. And there will be forms there that you can actually print off and fill out and submit and purchase your brick if you would like to be a part of our train station fundraising efforts. We also heard from Mr. Ray, who is the architect of the train station, and he has done a lot of work over the past few months. It may not be real evident, but that's because he's been working through the bureaucracy with the Virginia Department of Historic Resources as well as DOD. And then we also have applied or requested from Norfolk Southern to get right away to the parking area because we only own the property the station sits on itself. Thanks to Todd and the town employees' efforts, we did get an agreement from Norfolk Southern, and Todd pleased greatly by saying they came out of order. But we got 75 feet on each end of the station, which is going to allow us to make very nice parking area, curb appeal type enhancements outside the station. We also got right away through the first track, which is an active track, and we have right away through the railroad avenue or Deco Street, as some people refer to it, which you would assume is a town street, but it actually belongs to Norfolk Southern. And we got the MATT also in this agreement where I think we're paying $300 a year for the lease for that property indefinitely. Todd shared with us, along with Barry, the financials, some area. The project was a $404,000 project. We did get $323,000 MATT 21 grant. Todd has sufficient money in the budget to where we're good. Of course, like with any project, it probably will go over, so we'd still like to raise a little extra money. We've applied for some additional grants, are hoping to hear some good news on those down the road, and if you may, there's anything else you've got to apply for, or more than one. Love to have that information. Todd also challenged the committee to maybe have another fundraiser, community awareness event, and I think the group decided that rather than doing that during Thanksgiving and Christmas, we're going to do something in January, when everybody's through their celebrating. We're going to do a January luncheon, breakfast, dinner, something, if you can determine.
Birthday parties.
We could do a birthday party for the mayor. Very nice advice, mayor, too. That'd be very friendly.
Gary, I didn't hear, how much donation for the bricks?
$50.
$50 per brick.
That's cheap.
That's cheap. Very cheap. And we sell 100, I'm just seeing what that adds up to, and that helps us to...
I think those with Virginia, they sell for 100, 150.
We want to make it reasonable, but we also want to sell some bricks, and we need to do that. Now's the time for people to step up and help the town. Mr. Ray said that the project will go to advertisement very soon, correct, Todd?
Yes, good way to put "very soon." Makes you have trucks.
And it will be 30 days when it goes to advertise the project, 30 days then to prove that when someone's selected. Have been 180 days to completion, so as you can see, we're going to finish this on schedule. We're going to be back on track, and that is intentional. We're going to be on track and have that station open to celebrate big times this time next year.
Thanks, Sheriff, for bringing information. Next on the agenda is the airport tour.
Okay, I don't have a whole lot to report on the airport other than we're there and doing business, and what I'm here for tonight to talk about is the Veterans Day Parade, which is this Sunday. So, we want everybody in the town to come out and support the veterans. It's a very important day for them, and we're losing our war to vets so fast, we don't keep, hardly keep up with it. So, let's don't let this slip by and forget about what we're here for, and give these guys a great parade this Sunday. It will start at the high school again at 2:00, in Dale Main Street by 3:00, and then they're going to serve a real nice dinner for the veterans in the Bethel Church up here. So, we're real happy for this event to take place and invite everybody to come out and enjoy the event.
Also, flower.
Yeah, a little bit of flower. Yes, it will.
28 grand. Are they any, I mean, anything else, only 150 families?
Susan has got the Tass Town Office Board's board, and we have not heard yet when they'll be here.
No, we haven't heard a firm date from them. We're anticipating it'll be around Thanksgiving is when they should be finished.
Okay. Next on the agenda, a special presentation, Chief Cooper.
Usually when I, as everybody knows, it's been tradition since I've been here, so always introduce, come on up to, come up, a new employee when he comes to the police department, and this is going to be no different. This is Mr. Kelly Joe Jesse, and he's going to be our newest employee of the police department. He's going to school in January at Intervis. Thank you, sir. Other thing I wanted to do tonight was to thank two employees. Everybody knows we had a, because everybody knows we've had a bad accident in town recently that involved one of our police cars. I was away at a conference that evening when I hate getting calls like that, and when you get a 7, 8 o'clock call, it's usually not really good, and then I find out that we had a head-on collision on, it was 460, right? Okay, we had a head-on collision on 460, and I just wanted to thank them because of the number of lives that was potentially saved that night. Okay, they had a car going the wrong way, and they knew this car was coming towards them, yet they still risked their lives to go that way because they were in the right of way. Okay, the car could have gone to the bomb. Medium strip could have gone to eat the side of the roadway, but instead, the car went straight ahead, and it hit Officer Blake's car straight on. If the car would have went left, yeah, if the car would have went left, he only had that much room to hit her car. So, I just wanted to thank you and commend you politely.
Thank you. 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 So, I just wanted to thank you and commend you politely.
Absolutely. I'd have to do that. Thank you, guys. That's part of our job, that's what we're here for. We do it every day.
You do it well.
Thank you.
Don't, don't run them cars into other cars.
You know, this thing, you know, after I was talking to them, and you guys can, uh, correct it, because like I said, I was out of town at a conference at the time. There was a backup in a matter of seconds, wasn't there?
There was four cars, there was four of us there. We were there within two minutes of the call. We had two deputies with us. One was in front of us, one was behind us. So, we had to take care of one way or another.
That's good. So, I'm glad. So, I just wanted to thank you guys once again.
You can welcome to many hours.
Thanks, sir.
I also wanna go off script a little bit here. I didn't tell you about this, but, you know, oftentimes, you guys here, everybody's always thanking me, thanking me, thanking me. It's not me, it's those guys. And when it's not those guys, it's that, it's our, Danny George crew. And I really wanna thank you guys, Donnie. Because without you guys, I couldn't get my guys there. We don't have enough people without you. And I wanna thank one person in particular, William Asbury. William, he's a God sent for me. When I need William, I just call him. And William does the fish, he'll stay out by night long for Fish Day. If I see something wrong and I say, William, can we do this? William finds a way of doing it. And I probably didn't wanna thank Donnie, and let William know I thank him for this, my word. Thank you.
Our employees are, they step, they step up all the time, and, uh, I commend all of them. As many activities we have in town and, uh, hope their kind of raise is, is love that, uh, they step up and come and call. We appreciate them.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is, uh, change of business, change of business. Go with the conference, Rick.
I gave y'all a copy of the sign that we agreed to on, uh, last Thursday, October twenty-seventh. Lasting final draft, that's what both signs are gonna look like. Just wanted y'all seen before you saw them around town. Was it added on the project?
No, it was just, uh, I know, change of business.
Missland.
Missland.
I thought you were looking at the wrong one, didn't you?
Says Missland. Well, that should take off, huh?
And I should have mentioned, then I will see the latest plans for train stations there on this site. And they'll be historically.
You don't get the Missland category.
No, no, I...
Of course, he is. Uh, next on the agenda is a new business, approval of a letter of support from Southwest Virginia Community Health Systems.
All right, what you got in your, in your package, just like the mayor said, you've got a, a letter here that's requested, entails, uh, support by way of writing an letter to them. I guess they were looking for some funding. I'm not sure how, with, with all the politics with the hospital and everything going on. I didn't know whether, we did this before, if you recall, about a year ago, where the cancel approved. But I've got a letter, if you flip the page over, I've, I've written a very generic letter, uh, support. And it is cancel approved, moved forward with it. But Dr. Katrin, you probably know more than anybody here about what's going on with the hospital. I didn't wanna do something that was in competition with our local hospital. So, if you'd like me to send the letter that you have or will, you don't...
Well, I, I know for a fact they have purchased or have a letter, the intent to purchase, go health department. And they have to pay funding in order to do that. And there is a sign out there from the hospital for, uh, for the Taz Community Health Systems.
Sure. Listen, give me your answer. There was no harm in sending the letter. I'm sorry, there was no harm in sending the letter. So, letters forward. Okay. That's fine, that's all I mean. Unless Kenny Jackson, you can move on to the next one.
I don't think we need a brother on there.
Next, okay.
Next, the, uh, on the agenda is the resolution to support the local brewery. And I'll read the resolution, whereas the town has, which is the county, Taz County, has embarked on significant plans for the community, uh, and with restoration of the town, whereas the future plan has been developed and adopted, which includes areas in the enterprise, home tourism, some, uh, other local government incentives to help attract entrepreneurial opportunities. Whereas Virginia Mountain Brewery, EBA, Painted Peak Brewing Company plans to make a potential impact on the economy of the town of Taz County. Whereas the Painted Peak Brewing Company will provide direct job creation to new industry and part of development, increasing community emotions and awareness and tourism expansion. Whereas the Painted Peak Brewing Company has invested four hundred thousand dollars today and plans to invest an additional one million dollars in seeking grant funds through Virginia Coalfield Economic Development Authority to bring this project to fruition. And therefore, we have decided the town has will hereby support the adaptation for the grant funding through the Virginia Coalfield Economic Development Authority for the purpose of purchasing additional equipment and increasing the size and scope of distribution for the Painted Peak Brewing Company. I get it on this date, November the first. I hear a motion to approve this.
I'll save that motion.
Have you had other comments? Here none, call for vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. And I'll propose to, uh... Thank you, Larry, for, uh, all the incentive, uh, trying to, uh, improve the town of Tazville. And, uh, I like the name of the company, by the way. It's pretty neat. When I seen the, the sign out there, I said, you know, that, that has the, uh, peak and also, uh, uh, place down, conservation.
Thank you, Larry.
Yeah, all of the getups, so, uh, that's pretty neat.
I, I give that credit, I left it David, uh, and his mom credit for that. But, uh, it ties back to our Indian, Indian heritage as well. And, uh, we're very proud of that, so. And I'd like to reiterate what's already been said, and I said this to you before. I apologize for talking while I've been seated. But, uh, we have such an outstanding team. And you guys head up this team, and I applaud you for what you're doing. And we talk to people in other towns. And I, I think a lot of people in the community feel and recognize the leadership that you brought to this community, and some key people that you brought in. And, uh, I hear names mentioned that, Donnie and his crew and so forth. I, I just wish that people in the community truly knew the sacrifice, the, the temperament with which these people put forth their work every day. It's, it's amazing to watch. We're proud to be part of town, watching it.
Thank you, Larry.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is, uh, Taz County Radar Study Discussion, Andrew Davis.
Yeah, um, just briefly, you got it in your packet several years ago. Um, there was a, a, uh, push to do water quality test. There were several water quality tests. Radar was another test that was done. And recently, a random assortment of households were contacted by Virginia Tech, and there were radar tests, uh, they were done. Some of those radar tests in, in the area were high. The town of Tazville seems to be, if you look at the chart, seems to be one of the hottest areas of, in the county. However, if you look at your additional information, which shows, um, the picture of the Commonwealth all together, you'll notice that all up the, um, the southwest coast of, uh, the state of Virginia, all down through there, is areas mapped, uh, that's historically shown to be nothing radar that are, uh, that are above what we'd like to see. So, just wanna update Cancel on what's going on there, the information's in here. You also got in your packet a more in-depth information that's back in Missland. I will be working along with Tazville County over the next several months. What we'd like to do is establish, uh, radar test kits for anybody in town that wants to check their home. We think that we can get those little radar, you can buy them at Lowe's, by the way, they're not a whole lot. But, um, you can, we're actually, we think we got a grant, uh, also the building department, the code enforcement office, they're also considering making radar tests part of their development. If you have a radar level today, that radar level will be there twenty years from now. It's not a, it's not a moving, uh, scale, it doesn't get any worse, doesn't get any less. So, there's ways that you can, uh, uh, remediate it, remediate it. And, uh, so we'll be coming back and letting the public know, uh, various contacts in the area, various grant opportunities, and where you can get radar kits to check your, your own home or anywhere else you like to. So, just want to kinda update Cancel on what's going, what's going on there. But I do wanna emphasize that we're no different than anybody, than any other locality stretched up the line, uh, when it comes to the Tazville County itself. It seems like, based on the information, that the town of Tazville and surrounding area may be a little higher. But it also takes into effect the number of responses that Virginia Tech got. So, there were more responses in the town of Tazville, which obviously is a direct reflection on the amount of data they had. So, uh, any questions, if anybody's, the I, I forward them on to the appropriate individual. I've talked directly to several, uh, individuals at Virginia Tech, along with the county. We're gonna do things, uh, in-house to help get areas addressed if homeowners want to do that. That's all for now.
Uh, next on the agenda is the retail strategy consulting services.
Okay, exactly. A week ago, uh, Cancel, each one of them that were able to come, had an opportunity along with the planning permission, the IDA, a couple of the members of Tazville today, to, uh, to listen to a company, as the mayor said, they come to the retail strategist. What this company does is they, they take a, a locality that they're emboldened by, and they have massive contacts with, uh, restaurants, retailers. This is what they do for a living. Most of us in the room realize that we have a pretty aggressive incentive package that the IDA has jurisdiction over. And this incentive package, I said from day one, you know, does no good if we're the only ones to know. So, retail strategists came in here, um, they drove in from, well, flew in from Birmingham, Alabama. That's where the home office is at. And they gave a pretty good presentation. You know, the price tag on there is forty thousand dollars a year. I will say, several years ago, I don't even wanna say several years, maybe a couple of years ago, a year and a half ago, I gave a presentation in front of Tazville today. And my, my goal with the outlook then was to hire a full-time economic developer. And, you know, because of the different things that creeped up, I've not been able to do that. Because of the finances and various things that happened in town that we didn't expect. I've just not been able to budget that. But what an opportunity. I could never do that, uh, for forty thousand dollars a year. These individuals know people firsthand. Now, incidentally enough, that made national headlines somehow. I don't know how it did, but it was actually, uh, it was in the local paper. Um, I've had a number of firms from all over, uh, the United States have called and heard that we were moving forward. And I've really got some attractive cost. As eager as I am to, to wanna look at Cancel and, and say, let's proceed, my mom told me one time to slow down. And I feel like I'd like to have a little more time to do some due diligence. Uh, I have not had an opportunity, obviously, in a week's time to, uh, to make a phone call. I've talked to Rick Shipwood with TNT, I've talked to Jim Thompson, he, you know, I've got some input, but five working days is not enough in the local government to make anything happen. So, with that being said, I'm really excited about the opportunity to be able to work with a firm that does it, that knows the contacts of restaurants and retails. You had a wealth of information in front of you. You had a wealth of experience from Danville to Lynchburg, where they had been highly successful. But I'm just, you know, Cancel, you wanna welcome the vote tonight and say, well, we're gonna move forward. It was a pretty, it was pretty impressive. But I'm just, and I support that, but, you know, to make a recommendation, you proceed, uh, just, I feel a little weak tonight to do that. So, I would like Cancel's blessing, if, if your intentions were originally to proceed, to allow Dad and I to evaluate the competition that's out there. And, and email Cancel a, a recommendation between now and a meeting in December, if not, the meeting in December brings something back to you.
Well, I think that was the feeling of those of us that was there, that we wanted you to do a little cost comparison and what you're like. So, if you have an opportunity, I was wondering how you were gonna do that in a week.
Also, I also, I think we should probably do it. But I think we should wait at least until the first of the year.
Sure.
And that way, you will have your new council in seat, and we won't be allocating them to the forty thousand dollar a year debt. You know, a good question came up, Jack. I believe you even asked it, how do you pay for something midway? Well, not even midway through the fifth of the year, we're just pulling out of the first quarter. But how do you pay for something that's not budgeted? And, you know, in local government, the way you do that is you still figure to pay costs. So, that, that three hundred thousand dollar line item for payment gets reduced by whatever the value is. Or the contingency line item, what a rule they got, or Cancel's payroll gets reduced or something. So, uh, anyway, y'all put a laugh right there. Look, me, I'm smiling. But I think that'd be the best route to go. You know, one of the, actually got one in the day from a company that also had an expert in Danville, and several other in Commonwealth, uh, listed where they worked and had, you know, favorable experiences. And it was hard to cause, so.
All right, well, that would be the question. Did Lynchburg get rid of them and go with this new company?
I've asked, I've asked the same question. But now, I will, I will say that I was fair enough to let our presenter know that I was having second thoughts. You know, I sent him an email, let him know due to that. And of course, he encouraged me to proceed forward. And, uh, and that they had taken the place of a lot of retail outfits that are doing this. And Lynchburg was probably one of them. I didn't ask him directly, but obviously, he's working for Lynchburg now, so. I don't think another month and a half, Jack, I agree with you, I think it's gonna, it's gonna tip. So, uh, I'll feel, I'll be able to sleep better at night anyway.
Another thing I think about is, within the town limits, how much property do we have that we can develop?
Sure.
When you start talking about spending that kind of money. They could probably bring some business in, they might help the county more than it helps the town.
Well, and what's good for them, good for others too. So, there is, but at the same time, well, I want to put a county bill...
Well, for, for one thing, for example, and Larry's trying to test this, if it's a restaurant, if it's a national restaurant chain, they're not going into the county because the county does not have the required...
No, it's your own application, though.
Well, I know. But until they do that, uh...
Well, I'm hoping that something like this would incentivize somebody to buy in or develop property out that we're expanding.
Sixty-one.
That's what I'm hoping.
Of course, I mean, we gotta have something that incentivizes people, so, heck, they book what Tazville's got, or this piece of land here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a chance, I'm gonna buy that, and I'm gonna develop it, and I've got somebody right here that's willing to come and put a business on it.
What about the property on Penn Castle Road that goes from Penn Castle all the way over to sixty-one? I mean, who, who runs?
Penn Ball?
Yes, no, 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 I'm talking about out of Penn Castle, Jefferson. The property that, that Kinsaw had.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's absolutely available. It is for sale.
It's for sale, right?
You can build right there, but...
Good site.
Oh, yes, good site, and I, you know...
The whole idea and the four million dollar capital improvement project on sixty-one is, is to secure our future. This three lane is coming along pretty good, haven't been out there recently. It's a little bit of a headache during peak hours, but, uh, it opens up that whole corridor out there. There's two commercial entrances going in there. So, there's no question that this council has been impressive, and taken on projects and things that help the community grow. Can't ask for a, a more active governing body that sees, sees the need. So, kudos to each one of y'all for what you're doing. But right, right now, with this particular issue, um, they might end up being the choice. So, keep in mind, they have that, that annual conference, by the way, that starts on Wednesday. So, you know, we got another whole year, Jack. They'll have another one next year, but...
They probably have a couple, two or three more.
They probably do, but, you know, I do wanna say, for the record, I'm not questioning that company. I'm not questioning the company that came here from Birmingham, Alabama. I just feel like as town manager, I can do a little bit of jumping, you know?
So, that's, that's my thinking, waiting till the first of the year, letting the new council, whoever they might be, hopefully, it won't be all new. But the, uh, that way, they will receive it, they'll have intuition what they wanna do to it.
Todd, would you have to do the permit process for there or not?
Uh, if it's under a hundred and twenty, the IDA does not. So, uh, I don't know, like, a hundred and twenty is how much they charge. If, if it's under a hundred, I can't remember exactly what it is, but the IDA does not. The county council? Yes, you did.
So, therefore, we would have to, uh...
Reputing.
Reputing to the IDA that, uh, that hired them and what they're gonna come and do that way.
They can, they can, yeah, they can hire...
So, so they, they would, I know there was a few people there from the IDA, they would have to agree to the representation from Councils too.
That is true.
The way this all came about is actually Todd, and I was supposed to go to the email. I actually got an email from these people, and I forwarded, and I asked Todd if they thought we were coming. And I forwarded Todd's file, the people said, this is how, sort of, and, uh... They didn't solicit, solicit us. Uh, we'll move on. Uh, next on the agenda is state of good repair.
Okay, um, that is another, the state of good repair is another brand-new, um, incentive that the Commonwealth has got out. We've got seven bridges, I mentioned this earlier, Senator Chasen was here, so I, I did mention that strategically. I thought it won't be redundant to give a reason for that. But, uh, we've got seven bridges in town that need attention. Robyn just told me eight, and she's probably eight, eight bridges in town that need attention. I can assure you that there's no other political jurisdiction in Bristol District that's got more bridges that need attention than we do. We've got three in top ten. And when I say three in the top ten, it's a level of necessity. So, I feel real comfortable that we will qualify for something, but, uh, you know, just to be blunt, there's been a huge neglect in, um, in bridge, in bridge maintenance, so...
You know, this is a top ten, it's not good to be in, actually.
It's not good to be in, but it's good that you may get incentivized because of it. You can see the dollar figures, and I can't see them, I got my iPhone, so I can't see them. So, y'all can zero in with your computers, but, um, you know, Donnie Pruitt for the last, since he's been public works director, Riverjack, I mean, the superstructure under, uh, under that bridge, he probably saved the town and excess of two hundred thousand dollars by doing that in-house. He's now working on, we just took the, the, the roping down on that bridge. We had it blocked off from public pedestrian because of the sidewalk. We did all of that in-house. And we keep working on several other bridges that we've got, and we'll continue to work on. But, um, you know, as we've been saying here before, and the staff has done an incredible amount of work in the last, uh, in the last several, several years, uh... an incredible amount of work in the last, uh, in the last several, several years, uh, and particularly that just to be part of the team. But these bridges, you know, another area, um, this is eight of them, and it's only, I just, I just put, so you'll know where they're at. I just put the, the eight cover sheets in here, but the information that went into these, uh, was tremendous. And, you know, I want to thank Rob. Those of you sitting there will say, think I sit down there and do this whole model all day long, you know, no, I don't. But, you know, revenue sharing, last year was over $750,000. Robyn worked to fill it out. You know, to help Donnie Prue to fill, Robyn, and then straight up, the State of Good Repair right here, Robyn filled it out. Um, primary extension, Robyn filled it out. Uh, filling out all the applications she does, HR, payroll, puts up for me all day long. Uh, but, you know, Robyn does it a lot, sometimes thanks to Grant, but I appreciate it. And so, all my employees, they're incredible. Uh, we've got a lot of stuff going on. I think a lot of hidden ways, you may not see it, but there's normal going on in this town hall during the day, and I hope that we can have that.
That 61 bridge is being replaced anyway.
Yeah, Route 61 is, one of them is listed on there. Obviously, we didn't apply for that one. But it's, um, it's going to be go to A next year, I think. So, maybe this
Before we go to the executive session, we got a couple, uh, we did receive a grant for the, uh, the, the, the toll.
And by the way, the progress you're making on the recycling area, which is, too, is.
Yeah, we're coming along, sir.
Donnie's, Donnie's got that one too.
Also, I'd, I'd like to mention tonight, every month, we sit here and give certain ladies, sitting in here tonight, the devil, about the rescue squad.
Who are you talking about?
Oh, but nobody's mentioned tonight and congratulated her on the amount of money that she's gotten in this past month.
That's right.
And done a good job. She has done a great job, and I want to thank you very much, and it's very much appreciated. And Jack, I want to let you know that I had a bet with Sandy private to me that he wouldn't be brought up, and I had $50 for the line.
You could have brought it up.
Well, I tell you, though, I sit in that meeting the other night, I always ask questions that I shouldn't ask. But a lot of times, I like to say something that maybe I shouldn't say.
All right, you can go. I got to go both things, all right? All right. Uh, be a listener, I do thank everyone who was involved in the activities last night. Uh, I get amazed at the amount of people that comes there, Main Street, uh, every time we have an activity. And, uh, uh, to be honest with you, the last two were people I've never seen before in my life. And, and they were there on Main Street. And, uh, I think kids enjoy the time, and adults, both enjoy their time. And I know Brad enjoyed his time in, in his office.
Hello, Wisty, I love scaring you. Scare them, they come home, it's anyway, so I feel, I'm, I'm.
We want to salute these people that helped in, in those activities. Uh, also, uh, this week is, uh, they have a community prayer for our nation, and it's, we, November 3rd on, at the Altitude Station at 6:30. Uh, and please come out for a recital today for us. Uh, if nothing else, we go off with Cancel. Uh, entertain a motion to, uh, legal counsel.
Make the motion to go into executive session for legal counsel.
Say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.